Okay, it looks like seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, September 21st, meeting of the Milford Planning and Zoning Board. If we could please do the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Great, thank you. Beg if we could please call the roll.
Okay, Ms. Austin. Yes, thanks. Mr. Cassinelli.
Here.
Mr. Kater.
Present.
Mr. Collegian. I didn't see him, I don't think, no. Ms. Kearney.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Mortimer.
Present.
Mr. Sadi.
Present.
And Mr. Zaharides.
Here.
Okay, and Chairman Kish.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. So our first order of business is the proposed regulation change 21-5 petition of John Nuff Esquire for changes to Article 3, Section 3.9 Shopping Center Design District, Article 5, Section 5.1 Parking and Loading Regulations, and Article 11, Section 11.2 Other Terms, to be closed by November 12th and voted on by December 17th. This is a continuation of an existing public hearing, so the public hearing is still open. I will give the applicant a few minutes to go over what their proposal is, and then we will allow the public to have input if they so choose. The applicant has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is John Nuff. I'm an attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Connecticut Post Limited Partnership. And with me this evening are Stephen Levin, John Michelle, Scott Pollak, all of whom you've heard from two weeks ago. You know, we're really pleased for the opportunity to continue the discussion with you with regards to our proposed revisions to the regulations. You know that this application is vital to the mall, but somehow I think that obscured the simplicity and the modesty of the requested changes. And I know that some of you have said you want to relook at some of the regulations. And so I think it does bear a quick review. And Mr. Chairman, I know you said you'd give us a few minutes, and I promise you that this will be just a few minutes, but I do want to go through some things because, as I said, I think our stressing the importance of this rate change to the mall really did obscure, frankly, the simplicity and the modesty of the request. And rather than going line by line through the regs, I think there's a much more logical way of describing the proposed changes that not only will make the request clear, but will facilitate a discussion with all of you. And that dialogue is very important to us because while this application is a very modest first step, it opens the door to taking the next bigger steps together. Before we begin, I just want to note for the record that we have submitted a confirmation from Don Poland that his findings from the report prepared last year are still valid. That was in response to a request by Commissioner Sadi. And then we also have submitted today a revised amendments revised since our last hearing that includes the 5% affordability component, includes a minimum square footage for the plaza, and corrects on the formatting and language issues raised in David's memo from several weeks ago. So I think we can start our slideshow, and again, I promise this will be short. So, you know, there's nothing much on this slide. Obviously, we're here on behalf of Connected Post. We're going to share, sorry.
You should be able to share.
Yeah. There we go. So there's really not that much on the slide, however. Go back. Maybe the most important thing you're on here tonight is what's in this first line. This is a zoning text amendment application. And that's all that it is. It is not a special permit application, and in no way deprives the commission of the opportunity to carefully scrutinize future applications pursuant to your special permit regulations filed at Section 7.2. As you know, everything we want to do with the mall requires a special permit. Therefore, everything we would want to do requires a public hearing. And so it gives you the opportunity to scrutinize future applications, and we welcome that scrutiny. Next. So quickly, these are the changes from the 2020 application that are really important. They're important individually, but they should also be read holistically because it resulted in a very different design. All of these are in response to working with and listening to you. So very quickly, mixed-use buildings required for any residential, proximity of mixed-use and multifamily buildings to the mall, not on the, not an island in the sea of the parking that we talked about a year ago. Integrating mixed-use multifamily buildings with the plaza, a minimum plaza size of 35,000 square feet. We're adding an affordable unit component to the, to the requirements, design standards, and sustainability. So these are substantive, tangible changes that are directly responsive to your comments and others in the city comments. And we shoulder these obligations willingly. I want to repeat that. We shoulder these obligations willingly. And that's why we, we really want to hear your thoughts, and we invite you to share your thoughts and concerns about the regulation amendment because we want to do our part, and these are things that you're asking us to do, and we are gladly taking on. Okay, next. So what are the categories of uses? Very easy, tall into three camps. First is the modest expansion of uses to accommodate opportunities that have been identified by the city administration, but also just to clarify some, frankly, some things that lack a little bit of clarity in the regulations. If you have any concerns about these things, we want to hear them. I doubt that there will be once we actually go through them. Second is the modification of the residential opportunities and requirements to ensure success for shifting population demographics. You know, right now, as I've said many times, multifamily is permitted in the zone, but in a garden-style apartment format. It would be separate and apart from the mall itself. We don't think that makes sense. We don't think that you would think it makes sense, and so we want to make that change. Again, a modest modification to the existing rights. And then the third camp is incorporating specific commitments by Centennial to achieve the city's and the commission's goal for the post. As I said, these are obligations that are gladly shoulder by Centennial, you know, at the post. Again, we're being responsive to the city, and I don't think there's going to be any difference of opinion on these as well. And the whole goal of all of these is to create a vibrant, engaging, mixed-use community that really is an attraction for the city of Milford and those surrounding us. So very quickly, this was the concept plan that we showed you a year ago. The existing conditions on the left, you can see there's the Sears Tile Tire and Loop Express Building in the top left corner, and then replacing that, as I said, on an island is a four or five-story multifamily apartment building. That was our proposal a year ago. Now, our proposal now incorporating all the changes that I had, I had discussed and will discuss, this is what the 2021 Regulation Amendment requires us to do. It's not something that we get to do. It's, it's the obligations that are imposed of us that, that we are required to do. This is the result of, frankly, Scott Pollak from Arrow Streets, you know, working very hard in terms of figuring out a way to best integrate multifamily, mixed-use, and the plaza into the mall. You know, you know, Scott hasn't really spoken a lot, but you know, one of the reasons I'm really anxious to get to the special permit application is that so Scott has, has a bigger stage, but he is, I don't know if there's a better person literally in, in America than Scott to help redesign this site for the future. He has done a number of very impressive, comprehensive master planning projects. And so I think it's important for the commission to know that a lot of care and thought by a very prestigious firm and, and professional has gone into the design of this master plan concept. Okay, next. All right, so what, this is the first category of modest changes to the regulations. Some of these are just simply to provide a clarification. And as I note, these are all special permit uses, and therefore a public hearing is required for all of them. Mixed-use buildings within, with multifamily component, as I said. Multifamily residential is currently permitted. Mixed uses are currently permitted, but this obliges us to put multifamily in a mixed-use building. We expanded the type of schools that could be located in the zone. We want to make sure that outdoor dining was available for all types of eating places. I think there's about half a dozen different ways in which Milford defines restaurants. We just want to make sure that we could do all those, and outdoor dining is was, was possible at all those. We want to make sure the medical office is permitted. Right now, your regulations say professional office. We thought that that was probably already included, but we want to be very specific that medical offices included. We added community space, and then there's the incubator space. There's a question whether we allow manufacturing. Well, all it was, was intended to do was fabricating and manufacturer assembly goes for an incubator space. Candidly, if the commission doesn't like this, we'll take it out. That's the sort of dialogue that we want to have with you. The other accessory uses are for the clubhouse, for the multifamily, and then also entertain, outdoor entertainment for the plaza. If anyone has any concerns, any thoughts, any red flags, even the slightest, you know, gee, I'm not sure, please let us hear about it, but I don't think you do. The shopping center design district regulations already provide a very broad window of uses. All we want to do with this is expand it a little bit more in a manner consistent in the way the city has asked us to do, or in some ways just frankly clarify some of the uses as, as we've done with restaurants. Again, if you have concerns, please let us know. With the exception of the first bullet, I don't think there's anything that we, we, we would take off the table. All right, the second category are modest changes. Other way, sorry. This is the chart showing you the existing shopping center design bulk regulations in the first column. Second is existing residential. If we wanted to add residential under the current, and then the third is what we're proposing. So I know there's the question about the height. So right now, the minimum acreage in the shopping side of design district is 10 acres. We're allowed to go to 120 feet, 10 stories today. And has been for since 2000 or late 90s, ever since the shopping center design district was created. Principal uses very standard, 50 feet, 25 feet, FAR 1.5, so very, very standard. Same thing with the existing, the existing regulations for multifamily, which incorporates the RMF. For multifamily, now you'd have to do 20 acres, 35 feet, which is the primary issue. And then again, the, the principal uses carry, carry forward. Our proposed residential, really only two things that really have no impact. We need to make, or we want to make the lot area go reduce from 20 acres to four acres. And candidly, you know, under Section 3.9.6.2, you know, we already have that ability because we can subdivide so long as the, the, the total development continues to operate as a whole, but just for financing, other reasons, we want to make it very specific. But with the requirement that the multifamily be integrated with the mall and the plaza and in a mixed-use building, this will be a literally invisible division of lands if we were to create a subdivision of, of four acres or more. The other, the other make, sort of more important change that we're making with regard to multifamily is changing the height from 35 feet, which is the garden-style type of apartment, to 85 feet, five stories. Again, significantly less than what is already permitted in the zone, which is 120 feet and 10 stories. The rest of the bulk requirements are largely unchanged. So now we're on to the last and third category, Centennial Obligations. Now, these are not so modest changes because these represent your expectations of us. So we are requiring of ourselves, at your request, in response to you, multifamily has to be within, within a mixed-use building. Any mixed-use multifamily building must be located directly proximate to the mall, not off in the islands. We are incorporating sustainability features that John Michelle talked to you about two weeks ago. We are including an affordable unit component of 5% of the units must be complied with the Affordable Housing Statute. Design standards, we talked about those in terms of the plaza, about transparency, about where the retail space and the restaurant space has to be located in response or as part of the multifamily mixed-use buildings. We're requiring the plaza, and we're also limiting the total number of units in the entire zone to 300 units. Those are the things that we are including, the obligations that we are taking on, and we are happy to do so. As I said, these are gladly shoulder obligations. I don't think that there's anything in these as well that should give you any pause whatsoever. There's nothing in these regulations that are in any way terribly revolutionary, that are out of scale, that are, that are out of scale with the area, that are inconsistent with your current regulations. These are exceedingly modest tweaks to the regulation, and yes, it will, it will have a very significant impact on the mall, whether you approve or deny this application, but in terms of the application itself in the overall scale and in the overall context of the existing shopping center design district regulations, it is a very modest request that we're making. I think I kept within a couple of minutes, but I'm, and I've said this several times, we really want to hear your thoughts. If you have any concerns about any of this, please let us know. This merely represents the first step that, that this commission and the city can take together with Connecticut Post and Centennial to do something really terrific. This is a baby step. We think there's going to be some really great steps in the future, but we can't get to those next great steps without taking this first baby step. So I really hope to hear from you.
Can you stop your screen share now, please? Thank you.
All right, well, listen, thank you for that, and I appreciate that you have worked the proposal, having listened to various concerns that the commission has brought up. At this point, I would open up the public hearing to any members of the public who would like to be heard.
Please raise your hand if you would like to participate, either electronically or wave for the camera, and you will be recognized. Let's take a look. I'm scanning. I do not see anyone raising their hand, and there's no electronic hands, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so then I would like to open this up to the board. I would actually, I'm not going to call on everybody individually, but I would hope that everybody individually would make some kind of a, you know, statement or, or, you know, express your feelings if you feel there is other things that you would like to see in, in, in this application, or if you would like to see things that are in the application not be there. We do have that capacity to make a motion to approve, deny, or to to make some modifications to this application prior to voting on any given motion. So yeah, thank you, Joseph.
The attorney mentioned the, these are small steps. And he said that this will lead to bigger steps. Do you know what those bigger steps are now?
No. So, so rather than, yeah, what do you? Yeah, that's fine. I, I think, I think we can address each question as it comes up. So, so John, please go ahead and answer however you'd like.
Yeah, Mr. Cass, you know, you know, we, we spent a lot of time a year ago, and we spent some time this spring in the POCB meetings, and we spent a long time two weeks ago, you know, telling you what the vision was and what this could lead to. And as I said, and I, and I take the blame for this, I, I think that's, you know, clouded, you know, what it is that we're asking for. And so, yes, I mean, what our first step after this is what we showed you in the, the concept plan of, you know, two mixed-use buildings fronting on a plaza in direct proximity to the mall. That's the first step. And I think it's a really exciting first step. If you were to ask us what comes after that, well, I mean, you know, we share some of those thoughts as well, but, you know, we can't build something that the market can't support, nor would you want us to. No one wants a vacant building. So we want to do something that's, you know, makes the center productive, makes the city proud, you know, adds vitality to the center, whether it's medical office or other office incubator space, that, that's what those changes to the, to the special permit uses were intended to affect. The first step will be exactly what we showed you with some minor modifications. Plaza, multifamily, mixed-use, proximity to the mall, really attractive architecture, really great hardscape, landscape, you know, really creating a a fun and energetic location that will attract Milford residents and other residents to help support the mall and, you know, help, you know, promote the, the value of the mall and increase the taxes that we pay. So, so that's the next step.
So, John, do you have that, do you have that that visual, that PDF of a potential future look with the, with the office buildings that you could pull up? You don't do it right the second, but if you
Yeah, I mean, Chairman Kish, are, are you referring to the, what we call is the phase two?
Yes.
Yeah, we have it. I'm, I'm, I will be candid. I'm reluctant to go down that road. I mean, we're
No, no, I, I understand, but that's what, that's what the question was. What is the potential next phase? So if there's a visual of that, you'd like to share. It might be valuable. You don't have
Yeah, I mean, um, give us a moment, we can, we can pull it up.
Okay.
Okay.
John, I have it if, if you want me to pull it up. While, while we're pulling it up, can I, can I make a, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Can I try to answer somewhat? John, Michelle, do you have the, the rendering?
Stephen, we're, we're trying to pull it up here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah. So, I'm sorry, is it Mr.? I'm sorry, Castinelli, is that correct?
Absolutely, right, right.
Okay. Yeah, I, um, look, I think your, your question's a very good one, and the, the, the simple answer is, is that these projects, you know, we're dealing with a million 400,000 square foot mall. And the good news is we don't want the mall to go away, but the mall was expanded to six times to get to a million 450,000 square feet. We now have too much square footage as a mall, as every mall in America does, and so we have to walk backwards. But we, we obviously, we've got tenants and Macy's and Boscovs. We can't tear them all down, nor would we want to, obviously. So we've got to, and this project is not any different than anyone else's, but we have to go in phases. This is the Sears parcel, which is vacant. And so we're taking the Sears parcel first. This shows you what we would like to do as we start the project, which is removing part of the mall as we generate interest from other uses like medical, like university, like lab sciences, corporate campuses. These are the things that we want to generate, to bring, to create this type of a campus environment. It's definitely the plan we want to embark upon, but right now we have the Sears box, which is vacant, which allows us the opportunity to go to step one.
Okay, thank you. Joseph, do you have any other questions or comments?
The other, the other question I have is there's a section of the mall beyond Macy's and Boscovs. They're kind of in the middle. That section that goes all the way over to Target, I mean, if the market supports it, you would take that down and you would, you would construct whatever the market would support. Is that correct?
Well, I, I don't really realistically think that would happen. If that does, the mall's dead. At that point, the mall has died. I think that our vision, which is in that rendering we showed, was to remove the portion of the mall from Sears to Macy's and Boscovs and reduce that portion, which is, which has been a very weak wing of the mall, and financially it would allow us, other than we do have, yeah, this is the visual. We do, you know, we can't remove Macy's. We don't own their, we, Macy's is there. We can't take them down. We couldn't remove them if we wanted to. Target owns their store, so we, we've got significant limitations unless all those tenants leave to be able to, to remove that segment of the mall that goes from Boscovs to Macy's down to Target. The portion we are showing you is the portion we have the ability to, to recreate. But even still, we've got to move LA Fitness and Dave and Buster's in order to get to make this happen.
All right, our, and just one point of clarification is that this part of the master plan is outdated in that there's only 300 potential housing units, so any other construction outside of the first 300 residential units would be other mixed use. It would not, not be residential.
Correct, it's, it's correct. This, this is just a visual.
Yeah, this was an early visual of a potential plan, but this is not what, this is not what the zone change would allow.
No, 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 correct.
I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
And Chairman Kish, I'm going to repeat myself from last time. Any change beyond 300 is another legislative act. You're not setting a precedent. You're not bound to approve more residential future. It is another entire legislative act that you have complete discretion on, so.
Okay, is, is there, are there, are there any other people, stores in the mall that own their own facility? Besides Target and Macy's?
Uh, no.
They're the only two. They own those buildings.
They, Target owns their building. John, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong.
Macy's is a leased space, long-term lease space, but they, Target is the only owner on the campus.
I'm, I'm sorry, Macy's has a long-term lease that we can't, we can't get back, and Target does own their building, so we don't control that.
And, and, you know, just to, to take it one step further, Macy's does well here. Boscovs, you know, we put there to solidify the mall. The mall functions from Macy's, Boscovs to Target. It is a modern, right-sized mall at that level, and you know, our, our intention is to redevelop strategically and to keep the mall operating as a mall while we do that and to function as a mall in the future.
Yeah, and we, we just
All is successful.
Yes, sir, and we just committed, just to one last point, we just committed to a 10-year renewal with Dick's Sporting Goods. We just invested two and a half million dollars to secure a new 10-year lease with Dick's in order to further solidify that end of the mall so that our vision is, is not to remove the mall. It's to, at this point, the mall is still a million square feet, but it allows us to, to add uses to the campus that make this more mixed use that, that it, it will invigorate the mall and shrink it down to a size that can be much more productive from a retailer standpoint than what it is today.
Another way to look at it, too, would be 20 years ago when there were a number of retailers that were in expansion mode. When certain retailers failed, there were obvious backfill opportunities that would represent an enhancement to the property by virtue of a new investment. Those retailers don't exist for a variety of reasons. The most obvious is the growth of omnichannel retailing, Amazon, et cetera. So the universe of retailers to fill the space has reduced. The mixed-use component in essence is, you know, the best way to fill the space and to activate the rest of the campus to ensure to ensure the long-term success of everything that's left.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Thank you.
Joe, anything else?
No, no, I had nothing else.
Okay, I'd love it if one of the other members would.
Mr. Sadie here.
Thank you.
I'll turn it to Ledger down. This is really through attorney, through the chair, to Attorney Knuf. Thank you very much for the materials that were presented. Unfortunately, most of us probably didn't get a chance to see it until seven o'clock tonight or shortly before, but just so I can verify the two major changes that you talked about, one is three point nine point four three, subpar ten. That's the sustainability one. Is that accurate?
As I said, Mr. Sadie, there are a number of important changes, and let me let me go back to, if we can go back to sharing our screen. Because
I was concerned about this, the one you talked about sustainability and affordability. I just want to verify that we're seeing the same document, that one is subpar ten, which is the sustainability you described as the same considerations.
Right.
And eleven is affordability.
Yeah, so the sustainability was in the in our proposal when we submitted it, you know, a month or so ago. That has not changed since the last time. It has changed since 2020. The design considerations, those are new as of this year from 2020. The affordability requirement is new since last time.
Thank you. That that's, so just giving us the round numbers, the max is three hundred units.
Yep.
Five percent of dwelling units would create how many of that three hundred being eight thirty G affordability?
I can, even the lawyer can do that math. It's fifteen.
And 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 a clarification, it's not, it's not eight thirty G compliant in a sense that it would affect any totals. It's just using the eight thirty G language for what is considered workforce housing.
Right, so so to be clear, it is not an affordable housing project under eight thirty G. That requires thirty percent. But what it does, it does, it does give the city points in terms of getting another mortuary.
But it's not fully eight thirty-three, eighty percent. It's workforce housing, which is a different rent than the eighty percent that would be required if it was an eight thirty G project. Am I correct?
Right, if if this does not meet the meet the standard of an affordable project, which deprives the commission of a lot of discretion.
Right, so it's so it's it's lower than market rate, but it's higher than the eighty percent rate that's
No, 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 no. So so no, these would these would be at eighty percent. So they qualify, these units would qualify as affordable and and thereby achieve points for the city.
Okay.
The totality of the project is not an affordable project. The initial units are indeed affordable.
All right, I that's 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 now clear. It is it is at eighty percent.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, because you took two of my questions off the list, so we'll move through this quicker tonight. Attorney Knuf, I tried to go back and find as much of the materials, and quite frankly, the presentation that was done last year is not there. Could you just start off, how many acres is the mall? Before we change the zone change, how many acres is your mall involved right now? I thought it's somewhere in the twenty to twenty-five, but I just don't have the number anywhere.
So so by the way, nothing we're doing tonight is going to change our acreage, and nothing we're doing tonight is going to change. You know, the number of acres that are in the zone, but the but the mall itself consists of, I think, approximately seventy-six acres.
That many. And and then sort of, I appreciate that. The question I have is, if we agree to this zone change, and we have a four-acre requirement for the mixed use, which would include residential and business, would you say that we could get approximately fifteen to twenty additional applications out of your property of seventy-six acres?
Absolutely not. This is really easy, because we are limiting three hundred units to the zone. Not our property, not for a parcel, for the entirety of the shopping center design district zone. That includes our property, the Walmart parcel, and the Stop and Shop. And when we were here a year ago, I think Chairman Quish said, well, what about the other the other property owners? And during the P O C D committee meetings in the spring, the other property owner showed up. They said, we have no desire to redevelop our property. We have no desire to do multifamily. If you wanted to limit it to three hundred units per parcel, we'd be fine with that, we know. But we thought it was safer and give the commission greater comfort to know that we can only do three hundred units in the entire zone. So whether we whether we created four parcels or had the ability to create twenty parcels, it doesn't matter, three hundred units in the entire zone. And I would say that that is consistent with how many units could be developed under the current regulation, which relies upon the R M F sixteen zone. It's a it's a little bit hard to apply the R M F sixteen regulations to this parcel. But if you go by twenty-four bedrooms per acre and a minimum of of twenty acres, you could get a couple hundred units probably. So we're not even increasing the the gross number of units we could have in the zone or on our property. So the commission has a hundred percent security, knowing that there'll be no more than three hundred units at any time on our property or in the zone, unless we or someone else comes forward with another regulation amendment application, which is a legislative act.
Thank you. Thank you very much for answering the questions, Mr. Chair. Is this the time to make comments? Do we wait to make comments at a later time?
You're welcome to do it anytime you feel comfortable. Now is fine, or you want to wait? That's fine, too.
I'll I'll wait until it's time for the rest of the board to make comments. I have no further questions that I can think of. I appreciate the work that's been done by the group, and I appreciate appreciate the work by turning enough on this. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sadie. And by the way, if you have other comments, please, we'd love to hear them while the hearing's open. I I will tell you, as as someone who's done this a lot, it is, we always like to hear comments when we have the opportunity to respond.
I had a quick question.
Yes, Carl.
Wish, this is in regards to, you mentioned in this presentation this evening about the tax implications. Can you elaborate on that? How would taxes help Milford at this time by creating this project?
Right, so again, to be really clear, we don't have an application for a specific project before you. It's only regulation amendments. As I said, you know, the the amendments that we're asking for are very modest. But this allows us to take the next step in terms of redeveloping the property, because, I mean, two very quick points. One, the Sears box is empty. That's not doing anything for Milford's grand list. By passing this amendment and allowing us to submit a new special permit application subject to a public hearing, subject to all the scrutiny of the commission and the public, and we go forward and construct, then we can then we can take that land that's currently completely unproductive and make it productive again, and thereby help ensure that the mall continues to be the city's biggest taxpayer. Right now, I'm, you know, connected Post and Centennial is very proud of that, that they are the city's biggest taxpayer. That's in jeopardy, very candidly. Now, you shouldn't improve or deny this application because of taxes, but you ought to know about it. And that's one of the things that, you know, I mean, we've been talking about that. If you want to help ensure the vitality of this center, I'm saying I'm using vitality in the broadest possible context. People visiting, people enjoying themselves, having fun, something that you can point to, that we can all point to with pride. Say, I'm from Milford, and say, well, you got that great mall there. Yeah, we do. That's vitality, but so is taxes. And right now, there is a downward slide when it comes to taxes. The passage of this modest amendment will allow us the opportunity to go on an upward trajectory with our taxes.
Thank you, Carl. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make make it clear that taxes are being paid on that parcel of land. Yeah, so it made it seem like you were, there was no income derived from the Milford from that, but.
No, no, so so currently, the mall is the city's biggest taxpayer. We want to continue to be in that position as a result of further development. I I mean, to say it another way, the the because the world, the position as the city's largest taxpayer is dwindling and will continue to dwindle if we are not able to reinvest. This reinvestment, we estimate, will generate one point two five, one five million dollars in new combined tax revenue to the city of Milford, approximately a twenty-eight percent increase from where it is today. So instead of going backwards, which we're doing, and not happily, this will propel the tax base forward, which I think is good for us and good for the city, you know, and representative of kind of the the partnership that Chairman Quish pointed out that we're working together in. And I think that the numbers are big, they're real, they mean a lot to us, and I assume they mean a lot to the residents of Milford.
Great, thank you. I'd love it if a member of the board would chirp up.
Okay, I'll take the bait.
Thank you, John. I should raise your hand, Peggy. You're next.
I I just want to reiterate, I've said this before, I appreciate Centennial's passion with this project and willingness to work with us. As Attorney Knuf said, these are baby steps where, you know, nothing is being built or, you know, just rules and regulations being looked at and changed, and I I don't know, I just like the direction we're going in. I just just want to register that that point of view. So we're we're happy to work with Centennial. We're happy to work with you guys, so, you know, let's let's get it done.
Thank you, John. Peggy.
I just had, I hope it's not a stupid question, but I'm looking at the regulation wording. So let's just, for the sake of 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 something, say, Centennial builds their apartment complexes, and then they leave. They sell the rest of the mall to somebody else. Mr. Levin, I'm sure you're not going to do that, but I'm just pretending. Then the next person who comes in, that regulation has words like a plaza has to be there, and these these changes all seem very specific to what Centennial, not to what is general, that for what another person might want to do.
No, I'm I candidly, these these regulations will apply to whoever owns the mall. Now, I think you know that, you know, Steve has been very candid in, you know, saying that he's he's made a substantial investment in the mall. And, you know, it's his strong desire to to continue to own it and to enhance it and to make it a more a more vital place. But regardless of who owns the center, they will be obligated to comply with these regulations. Regardless, so these are not Centennial obligations, or these are not Centennial regulations. These are shopping center design district regulations, and so whether David Sulcus or John Knuf or Jim Quish were to purchase the mall, we all we would all have to comply with these requirements. Now, it is currently Centennial's vision, but this vision is, I mean, consistent with the marketplace, consistent with good planning. As Scott Pollock would say, these are things that are being done in other parts of the country at other malls, but they all have a sound basis in terms of, you know, finances and what the market requires and what frankly people want to see in terms of, you know, place making. You know, creating, you know, attractive places that people want to live and visit and, you know, making this, as we've been saying, an eighteen-hour destination. So in no way are are these are these regulations specific to Centennial in the same way that the that the regulations are not any more specific to the mall than they are to Walmart or to Stop and Shop. They all operate by the under the same rules.
If I can, if I can, I'm sorry, Peggy, you want to finish?
Go ahead.
If I can add to that or question to that, you mentioned also that there are some retail stores that own their parcel of land, similar like Target. What impact would that have if they decide to do the same thing, if they want to make a residential units out of there, they want to separate from the mall themselves? Can are the regulations allow that 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 piece or?
Absolutely not. That's similar to Mr. Sadie's question. I'm happy to answer it. So if you look at our proposal, this is page five, three, nine, four, two, I think, seven. It says dwelling units, the maximum number of units within the entire shopping center design district zone shall be three hundred. So yes, Target does own its dirt. It owns the property on which it sits. But in no way, if Macy's and Boscovs and, well, Target already, if they all wanted to own their own property and the commission approved that subdivision application under your existing regulations, they would be precluded, prohibited from doing any multifamily residential.
So what makes Centennial associated of having those three hundred units? Why couldn't Target have some of that piece or a percentage of it?
This is what we're proposing. I mean, so if the if the commission wanted to amend the shopping center design district regulations to say that you could have nine hundred units in the zone, you could have nine hundred or as many units as you want without a plaza, without a mixed use, without being processed. You can make all those changes. We are trying to be responsive to what we have heard from the city over the more than a year now, in terms of not wanting too many units. Making sure that they are incorporated into the mall itself. So
John, let me just just add one comment, and and I appreciate the, very much appreciate the comments and the questions. Target doesn't have the right. You know, they don't have the right to to do that. They they own their building, but they don't have the right to just to decide they want to build residential. You know, no more than than, you know, tenants have specific uses for what they can and can't do, and
Isn't that what you're, isn't that what you're doing with the Sears building?
Well, we own the Sears building.
And Target owns their building.
Yeah, but but there's an, there's an agreement amongst the parties that doesn't allow. Look, we, in order for us to build residential, even we have to get Macy's approval and Boscov's approval. We just can't go do anything we want if Macy's doesn't approve or Boscov's doesn't approve, or Target doesn't approve, or Cinemark doesn't approve. So we we, this is a first step. But we have a lot of work to do because we control the site. But these major tenants still control what we do on the site. And we will have to go to them to get approval to do what we're asking the the city to allow us to go do. So this is a but these these department stores understand, in our experience, they understand that these malls need to start repositioning themselves to what we're describing. It's good for their business, too. But but we have to get their approval, but they can't, they they don't have the land. They can't go build. We're the one that owns that owns the land to be able to build, but they have to approve what we're going to do in order for us to to make this project happen. This is, this is, there's a lot of work to be done to do what we want to do here. This is step one, but we've got to get a lot of other approvals and you know, and we've got a lot of other people we have to satisfy, but they want to see the mall succeed and their businesses succeed. But it is very different, Target, even though they own their box, they don't own the land that allows them to build apartments. If if that, if I'm being clear, I apologize if I'm not.
Carl, does that clarify your question? Is Carl still here?
I think we lost Carl.
Okay, Peggy, back to you.
No, I'm I'm I I understand that, no.
Okay. All right, Carl can come back when he, he may have lost his internet or something. Anybody else from the board, please?
Of course, I do have some other questions after hearing the other materials. This would be through, again, Attorney Knuf. Would you explain what the contractual responsibilities are? There was a statement made that you need to get approvals. Is that all based on the contracts with the businesses that are not owned in the in the mall?
Right, so so listen, I'm again reluctant to start down the path of, you know, the the contractual obligations between Connected Post and its tenants. I I don't know that it's really relevant. But yes, I mean, to to put it, to put it very simply, when you have a major tenant such as one of the anchors when you have a major tenant such as one of the anchors and you want to make a substantial change to the mall that is different from what, from the condition as it existed at the time they signed their lease, typically they get a right to to approve of that, you know, it's, it's, it's fairly commonplace. And as, as I said, Stephen, I think would tell you that he's very optimistic that the other tenants, to be said that they have approval rights over, you know, future development of the mall would say yes, because obviously this is in their best interest to create a, you know, a more up to date and more vital location than currently exists.
Contractually, what is the remedy they have if you go ahead and make your application before us if we grant this zone change?
I, I mean, Mr. Sadie, I, I can't believe, I, and respectfully, I don't think that's relevant to this regulation amendment.
It becomes relevant because Mr. Levin brought it in, I wouldn't have kept, I would have kept my mouth shut, Mr. Levin brought it in. Says he's got to go through a lot of hoops, I'm just trying to get an answer, if you want to give any answer, that's fine.
Can I, can I, Mr. Sadie, can I respond?
Prefer to go through Attorney Knuff, sir, please, I'm asking him the questions.
Mr. Sadie, I, you know, I, I, listen, I, I'm a zoning lawyer, I don't do transactional work and I don't do the transactional work of the level that we're all referring to. There are approval rights and my, and my experience has been that you can't submit an, or my clients do not submit an application to a client in the zoning commission unless and until they have, you know, some sort of authorization to do so. None of my clients would violate willingly or knowingly violate a lease or other requirement that they have in terms of what their obligations are prior to submitting an application. And I'm very confident that Centennial and Stephen fall into that camp.
Mr. Knuff, I really thank you very much because I'm not a contract lawyer either, so appreciate the answers you gave us, thank you very much, Mr. Quich, have no further questions at this point.
Thank you. Do we have a question or comment from either Mr. Kater or Mr. Zaharides?
Hey Jim, I'm just kind of backing off a little, I, I was absent at the last meeting, I haven't had a chance to watch it, so I'm kind of just sitting back right now, so I don't want to say too much.
Okay. Mark?
Um, I mean, I still feel kind of the same way that I felt last time, I'm concerned that we're opening up a Pandora's box to allowing multifamily apartment communities in areas where it's typically not found in Milford. And I think I made this comment last time and I still feel the same. You know, you, I personally feel that the mall is not a place to put three hundred apartments. Um, and it's going to look kind of funny to me to have three hundred apartments sitting in the mall parking lot right next to the mall, that's just an opinion, that's a comment, not a question, that's my, that's my take.
Okay, thank you, that's fine, that's your.
Um, I, can I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Um, and, and at the risk of repeating myself, I mean, we have that right now to construct multifamily residential on the mall. You know, we understand that, you know, there's always a concern among commissions when you come in with the regulation amendment or a map amendment about unintended consequences, you know, commissions rightfully think, well, if we approve this, what bad could happen? You don't have that here. You don't have that here for a couple of reasons, one, what we're asking for is entirely consistent with your existing regulations. We're not expand, we're not adding a use to add multifamily, it's currently permitted. The other uses that we're adding were frankly made at the commission's request and the city's request. The changes that we're making with regard to our own obligations that we are shouldering, that imposes no obligations and there are no negative consequences for the city, none. Those are obligations that we are taking on, those are obligations that we discussed together, that you recommended and we are gladly taking on because it will result in a better development. The only other changes outside of the uses and the obligations we're taking on are modest changes to the bulk requirements. And there's only two that we, that really matter. The, the, the minimum acreage, which you will never know about because we are, we are, we are required to incorporate the mixed use multifamily buildings in with a plaza and with the mall and then the heights. So if you look at the sum total, we are asking for the only substantive change that we're really asking for is the ability to go from three story garden style apartments to a five story, modern, attractive, fully amenitized, mixed use multifamily. And in return, look at the city's getting. You're getting assurance of continued robust taxes, you're getting a new plaza, you're getting a mixed use community. You are getting sustainability, which you don't have now, you are getting an affordable component, which you don't have now, even if we were to build multifamily. I listed all those things like in, in two or three different places in the slideshow because they're important, these are our obligations. So this is not as if you know, you have to be concerned about what if. The only what if is, is that the mall will get considerably better, considerably more attractive. It will stop its downhill decline, that's, that's the what if that you're getting. Nothing bad.
Thank you. Carl, we, I think we lost you for a moment, is there anything else you would like to add?
No, I think I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Question for you, Mr. Kater, do you feel that you can vote on this tonight or do you want to look at the video of the last meeting?
I, I need to look at the last meeting, I think I have to recuse myself, so I won't be able to vote on it. I'm sorry, I've been gone for three weeks, I haven't had a chance to.
No, I understand that, you, you're traveling the world with your, with your band, I get it, so. So.
I apologize, but.
No, no, that's fine, so if, if, if you had time to look at the, the video of the last meeting and consider what was said, um, do you feel that you could vote on it at the, at a subsequent meeting?
Oh yeah, I mean, I'm going to look at it tomorrow, maybe even tonight, but I just got into town. But yeah, I will look at it as soon as possible. I'm really interested in this whole project, so I, I will, I will do my part and be ready.
Okay. Is there anyone who sees a reason why we should not continue this conversation at the next meeting? To allow Mr. Kater time to look at it and hopefully get Mr. Collegian on board, there is a requirement of a majority of all members, whether they're present or recusing themselves or not, so that the extra two potential votes are impactful. Is there any, any board member or David who thinks that they'd like to comment on whether we should keep the meeting open till the next scheduled meeting?
Yes, Mr. Sadie would agree with that because at best you've got only eight votes available and you'd need at least five out of the eight.
Six, no, no, it, it's, it's a, it's six votes, it, it's a majority of the entire board, whether present or not.
I'm saying that we, we only have eight votes available tonight, we need six of those eight votes, so it just seems to me that, that.
Any other board member, board members or David to weigh in on this?
I have no problem with continuing it.
Okay.
We just have to check the record, I don't recall if Mr. Collegian was even at the last meeting.
Uh, he was, David.
He was.
Okay.
Well, Chairman Quich, I, I really appreciate your bringing this up because you took the words out of my mouth, as you indicated, we need a majority of the seats, not a majority of those voting, so we need six. And so losing two is, you know, obviously a, a big detraction, so I, I very much appreciate your thoughtfulness.
Okay, and Nancy, love to hear your perspective.
I am I'm kind of tired of kicking this down the can, I mean, I, I understand and I appreciate and I, I know we don't have a full board, so I can appreciate that moving it along, but we really need to put this, we have been dealing with this for quite a while now, so I think it's time for us to.
What's your feeling on the application rather than the question, on the application itself rather than whether?
Well, Jim, honestly, you really shouldn't be asking me that question and I am.
Okay, you can say I don't want to answer, that's fine.
Again, you asked my opinion and here it is. We have lost how we run our meetings and I think we need to get back to that. And that's all I'm going to say right now, so I understand we don't have enough people here right now to effectively vote on that application, but we need to, we really need to move this along.
And I agree, I think the public hearing should be closed as of this evening, not held on for any more discussions, but.
Um, what, if, if, David, if we close the public hearing, if we could still discuss it amongst ourselves?
Yeah, you can, you, if you, if you close the public hearing, then you can't get any more feedback, obviously, from the public or the applicant. Uh, but yeah, you can discuss it in terms of when you take a vote and you don't have to take the vote tonight, but you can close the hearing tonight and discuss you know, how you feel in the vote or the next meeting.
Right, now, now, Mr. Kater, if, did you feel that you'd like to be able to ask questions of the applicant at the next meeting? Or would you be happy with just having a conversation amongst the board members?
I think I'm okay with the board members and, you know, I've been following pretty well, I think, watching the last meeting and what I'm getting tonight, I think talking amongst ourselves should be sufficient.
Okay, does anyone on the board object to closing the public hearing?
Uh, Chairman Quich, my only concern is whether Mr. Collegian would have any questions that, you know, he would listen, I, I think if we're to keep the hearing open and I'm, I'm telling you, I don't feel terribly strongly, but I think if we're to keep the hearing open, the next meeting could be really, really short. It's just really confirmation that Mr. Collegian has any questions, we can respond to that and close, but.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, but without objection from the board, we are going to close the meeting. Um, and Mr. Collegian will have, have to rely on the record.
Okay, thank you.
So the public hearing is closed. I want to thank everybody for their thoughts and comments and for, and the applicant for the work that they have put in. Um, the next order of business is next order of business is two fifty-two, two sixty-two Depot Road, Zone LI, Petition of Michael Welch, Revolution Milford LLC for a special exception for a basketball training facility at MAP ninety-two, block seven oh five, parcel one A of which MNBD LLC is the owner. This was postponed from nine eight and this is to be closed by November twenty-fifth and voted on by December thirtieth. The applicant has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Ben Wheeler, Licensed Landscape Architect in the state of Connecticut with Design Professionals Incorporated out of South Windsor, Connecticut. Here representing the applicant, whom I have with me across the table from me is Mr. Mike Welsh and Megan Curtin, they are the owners of Revolution Basketball Training, uh, which is the, the applicant on this property. Um, sitting behind me is Teo Rotaro, who is their real estate broker representing Revolution Basketball Training. Um, also on the call is Tony Vidi, who is the real estate broker for the property owner MNBD LLC. So as was mentioned, or is in the packet, Revolution Basketball Training is a a basketball training facility that is focused on individual skill enhancement. Um, and I want to make that perfectly clear, this is not a facility for basketball games or that type of facility, it is solely based on skill enhancement and training of individual players or small groups. Uh, if the board would approve this facility, um, it would be the second such revolution, revolution facility in the state of Connecticut. Their current location is in Manchester, Connecticut, uh, that has been open for just over two years. Um, and they do plan on opening other facilities throughout Southern New England as well um, because of their success at their first facility in Manchester. So if I can share my screen. So this is the, the plan that was prepared by our office that is before you. This is the existing condition survey, so the, the property comprises three basic buildings, this is two fifty-two Depot Road, this is two sixty-two Depot Road. Um, and in the back is a, a part of the property as well, another separate building, this is just a uh, a covered structure that is not enclosed and, and does not house any businesses. So the Revolution Basketball Facility will go in the rear of two fifty-two Depot Road, this little appendage on the backside of the building is approximately one thousand square feet, which will comprise the office and then the remaining of just under three thousand square feet is in this corner of the building, which will house their gym. And that is on the on this sheet in your packet titled C dash AP one, again, showing the office facility and the gym that they will be leasing from, from the owner, should you approve this application. So if any of you have been by the site or, or seen it recently, you'll, you'll notice that the site is currently under construction based on some improvements, MNBD LLC has owned the property, uh, not for very long, but they've been continuously making improvements to the property over the years and, and those are in progress. Uh, basically, as you see on the plans before you, uh, when all is said and done, the parking, striping um, and the fence layouts will be back in place as, as they were. Uh, we did receive the planning comments from Mr. Sulcus, um, and we appreciate his efforts on putting that together. Um, I just wanted to point out that on the, on the parking space allocation table, that is on the sheet two of three of the set, uh, this allocation table was presented for the entire property for both the buildings at two fifty-two and two sixty-two Depot Road and the rear building, this is not just for the two fifty-two building where Revolution will be going into. So Mr. Sulcus's report, you, you mentioned that there were fewer than a hundred and forty spaces on the two fifty-two side of the fence, which that is accurate. But the spaces required, the one hundred and sixteen, when you break down the, the individual uses throughout the property, um, that does include the two sixty-two building and the building in the rear. When you just look at the two fifty-two building and the, the property that is on the south side of the, the fence, which is located about here, basically splits the property almost in half. If you classify those uses in the two fifty-two building and the southeastern half of the rear building, uh, there would only be a requirement of eighty-six spaces for those uses. And as Mr. Sulcus indicated in his, his report, there are one hundred and eleven spaces provided on that portion of the property. Uh, one other thing that Mr. Sulcus mentioned is that in our allocation uh, for the actual Revolution Facility, we did break it down between the office and the gym use. Uh, if the entire thirty-seven hundred square foot facility were to be classified as a gym use, they would require an additional eight spaces over the twenty-two we are currently showing. If that were the case and the allocation were, were broken down that way, um, that would bring the requirement for the side of the fence just up to ninety-four. And again, we're providing a hundred and eleven, so we're, we're well in excess of what's required per your zoning regulations. Also want to mention, uh, in the packet, uh, there was a short little description of, of Revolution Basketball Training um, and what they are about and also their primary facility hours. As you can see from that, during the week, they basically start at four P M going to nine P M. The business in the rear, their primary hours end at three thirty and the, the front building, their business hours end around five thirty. So there's really very little overlap between the uses as far as parking is concerned. So between the fact that we exceed what's required for zoning um, on, on our side of the fence, um, and also the fact that the hours don't coincide with one and also the fact that the hours don't coincide with one another, you know, we certainly believe that we have more than enough parking to accommodate this facility. In addition to that, there will be times when Revolution does operate outside those standard hours, but pretty much all of their training sessions are by appointment only with their certified trainers. And so therefore, there won't be an influx of traffic at any given time just because somebody wants to come by on a whim and, and get trained at their facility. Like I said, it's by appointment only, set up on a weekly basis with their trainers. So, you know, they, they don't have a large group of people just showing up unannounced at their facility. With that, we did review the, the report that was put together by Mr. Salkis. And we, as the applicant representative at the applicant, we would accept the conditions as recommended by Mr. Salkis, should the board feel appropriate to approve this application. And also do want to mention that, obviously, this is a special exception application. We did review the criteria for the special exception in your regulations and do feel that this does comply with those requirements, given that they are just moving into an existing building and subleasing a portion of that. So with that, I'll stop sharing my screen, and all of us are certainly available, should you have any questions.
David, if you would review this and also identify for us why this is a special exception.
Okay. It's, well, first off, it's a special exception because the use of a gym is not called out in that zone. So it's not called out as a use, it's also not prohibited. So for that reason, they could apply for the special exception. And as you know, a special exception is totally discretionary on your part. Okay, so that, did I answer the question adequately?
You did.
Okay. So if you'd like, I can read my staff review. The applicant is proposing to, and a lot of this now is going to sound familiar, and it's been addressed to some degree by the, by the gentleman who just spoke. The applicant is proposing to establish a basketball training program, classifies a gym use of approximately 3,700 square feet. The plan shows 2,739 square feet. The often, the office portion is not counted separately. Located at 252 Depot Road. The existing building and rear building contain a mixture of warehouse, manufacturing, office, and industrial space. Fence is proposed that will run between 252 and 262 Depot Road, effectively dividing and limiting the uses to their respective sides of the fence. Currently, 262 Depot in the building in the back that are, in the back of that side are vacant and are not part of the application. Four plans are not provided to verify parking amounts required. The site plan shows 111 parking spaces available on the 252 Depot Road side, not the listed 116. The 3,700 square foot gym use requires 30 parking spaces, not the 22 spaces shown on the parking chart. It's estimated based on that, that the site is actually short 13 parking spaces. The board would need to determine parking adequacy under 3.10, 3.5, if a shortage is the case. The plan should be updated to reflect the correct information. Both the main buildings, 252 and 262, are being rehabilitated, and the entire site itself is being rehabbed and restored. The applicant should confirm that the parking space restriping is in compliance with Section 5.1, Diagrams 1 and 2. The restoration of the front landscape area along the street right of way will require an amended landscape plan showing compliance with Section 514.4 for street tree size and species in accordance with the list of recommended trees by the City of Milford Tree Commission, which that list has been furnished to the applicant. The city engineer requires that the driveway aprons and curves be constructed to city specifications, and the sewer line from Building 252 be made compliant with the City of Milford Sewer Connection standards. Staff recommends that if a special exception for Revolution Basketball is approved, it is conditioned on the following conditions. All parking stripings shall be in compliance with Section 5.1, Diagrams 1 and 2. Submission of an amended site plan in compliance with Sections 5.14.4. Satisfying the requirements of the city engineer in his letters, yet two letters dated the same date of 8/26/21, requiring concrete curbs and aprons, and, and that 252, 262 be compliant with the City of Milford Sewer Connection standards. And submission of an updated parking table accurately reflecting what's on 252 for its site and its use numbers.
Why? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any initial questions or comments from the board before we open up the hearing?
Mr. Sadi, Mr. Mr. Salkis through the chairman, please. Could you just briefly explain, Mr. Salkis, this is an application for 252, but the motion possibly might be 252, 262. Point is, are we only having to supply 252, or is it both?
It should be for, it should be for 252. I apologize if.
No, no, I just.
Yeah.
So what's going to be fixed and rehabbed to become the, the business is going to be 252?
Correct.
Thank you very much, Mr. Salkis. I appreciate the answer by Mr., I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Quish, for allowing Mr. Salkis to give me the question and answer.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board before we open it up?
Go ahead, Joe.
Yes, Dave, are there other businesses that are going to be leasing space here, Dave?
You would have to ask the applicant. You know, I don't know, because we don't have the floor plans submitted telling us what uses are existing or not existing in any given particular space in 252.
Right. Okay, Mr. Mr. Wheeler. What other types of businesses may lease the additional space that's not taken by Revolution?
I will, yeah, I'll be happy to answer that. The, the rest of the 252 building is occupied by the owner of the property. Mr. Vidi might be able to speak a little bit more to what his business does. It's a mix of office and warehouse use. And then the, the building to the rear is currently occupied by a landscaping company. Horticulture, uh, horticulture company.
Okay, Dave, is there enough parking for all these businesses to be there?
Well, that's why in my report I asked for the data, so, you know, we can be sure that on 252, we have enough parking.
Right, because it seems like the entire site is occupied.
Well, obviously, there's space for the applicant. And we, we know that the rear building, and I'll share my screen for a second here. Okay, do you, do you see that? So the, we know that this bill, we know that this building is occupied. How much of this building is occupied on this side? You know, I don't know where we, we divide the line to say, oh, parking for this part of the building is over here, parking for it's over here, don't know. We know that, based on what we just heard, that, you know, there is a tenant in, in this building, that it's the owner of the building and his business. But, you know, when we go to let's go to the I guess it's on the first page, bear with me for a second. Okay, so when we get to the parking space allocation, what we need to know is, and we heard that this represents the entire property, 262 and 252. What we need to know is how much of this is, is, is on 262, and how much is on 252 in terms of the occupants and the uses? That way, we can confirm that there is enough parking. So we need that clarification.
And that clarification would come from who, the, the owner?
Yeah, they would need to provide to us floor plans that show what the floor plans are here, what the floor plans are here, and I guess I would, I would just recommend them, you know, drawing the line across the building, you know, if, in fact, you know, there's a use that's filling this whole thing up, and we would need, based on the uses, to just, you know, basically plug it into our table in 5.1 to say, okay, we know, we know what the gym use is, we know based on the square footage, that's, you know, that's got to have 30 spaces. So how much of the other occupants of this building and what's here, how many, you know, what the use is here? We don't exactly know those numbers based on what's being shown here, because.
Oh, David, when you're, when you're saying here, you're not sharing the screen anymore, so.
Oh, wow, well, you have to remind me of these things, okay. So here we go. I apologize. So we need to know who the occupants are, what the, what the uses are in this building, and what the uses are in this portion of this building, assuming we draw an imaginary line going across, going along with the fence. So we can determine that, yes, to your point, Joe, is there enough parking here? We, there's 111 spaces. Is there enough parking here to accommodate the uses as they are in this building and this portion of this building? Because, yeah, okay.
Okay, is there any other questions from the board before we open up the public hearing?
Well, well, Dave, shouldn't we have that information to determine if there's enough parking before we vote on this?
I, yeah, because if, if there isn't enough parking, you can, because it's a mixed-use building, and because they're saying that the uses are at different times, although we don't know what those uses necessarily are for just this site, you can find a, you know, for parking adequacy, but obviously to find for parking adequacy, we really need to know what's on this side of the building, what's on this side of, of, let me share this, let me share this. Yeah, what we really need is to know exactly, you know, what's on this side of the line. And then that needs to be put into a table format like this, again, just for 252. This, obviously, we were told is a combination of 252 and 262, so we need it for 252.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So then, if, if we didn't have that, why did we, why did we see the application tonight?
Yeah.
It was, it was requested. Well, I don't know what, I don't know how I can answer that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we, we did have a meeting with the city staff last Friday regarding this application, and we did present the information based on that meeting. Mr. Salkis, you know, unfortunately wasn't present at that meeting, but because it is one property, you know, we were told at that time to present the parking requirements for the entire property, and that's the way we presented the information. If, if, as I stated in my presentation, if you take away the building at 262, which is all considered warehouse manufacturing, you know, the parking requirement does go down, and, and only 86 spaces would be required. I do have, if I may, I do have floor plans of the 252 building that shows the, the different spaces and the different uses to, to surprise the board tonight, if you'd like to see those.
Yeah, usually we'd like to have that info to review beforehand. That's sort of a policy that we try to keep, Mr. Wheeler. I'm inclined to ask that this application be tabled and have a have, you know, have the floor plans and have, have a, you know, a count for that one property, or are they merging these properties? I mean, just some, some more clarity. So, you know, we're hearing something from David that may be something different than what you heard, but I, I don't think we have a, a clear, concise application with all the information that, that we need to make a decision.
Mr. Chairman, too, just to be clear, this is, this is one property, even though they have two different addresses, this is, this is one property. And so when you consider all the uses on the property, you know, the parking breakdown table that is shown as a part of the application does show that there are enough parking spaces for all the uses on the property. And, and if you do break it down for each side of the fence, per se, and the different buildings, you know, again, we don't, just because we, we got the information, you know, late from, from Mr. Salkis, you know, we didn't have a chance to respond with the appropriate table. But as a part of our presentation, you know, the, again, you take away the, the buildings, the square footage from 262, and there are enough parking spaces on this, on the proper side of the fence for, for 252. So because the requirement does drop down, but, you know, we certainly, if the board desires that information to be shown graphically, we'd be happy to present it to you, again, you know, based on our meetings with the, the staff that we had late last week, and we submitted the material as presented before you, and, and we were, our understanding was that it would be sufficient, you know, for your consideration this evening.
Well, it, it creates a bit of a quagmire that we are getting two different sets of information. Mr. Salkis is telling us that we don't have an accurate table and an accurate description of the project in front of us, so. David, would you like to add anything before we decide on what we're going to do?
I, I would advise getting the extra information.
Okay.
So you can, because if, if you have to have, do a finding of parking adequacy, you'll know what to base it on. And if with the information, you don't need a finding of parking adequacy, well, that's good, then you'll know the information as it pertains to 252. You know, the, the big problem here is that the, the parcel is one parcel, but there's going to, there's a fence going down it. So again, as I said in my report, functionally, these are two separate parcels in terms of public access and being able to park. And that's, that's the issue.
Gotcha, understood. Is there any, anyone who objects to hearing this at the next meeting with more fully fleshed out information?
No, no.
Just your question, Mr. Sadi, I don't object either, but one of the things that I was listening to, I think it was Mr. Wheeler point out, maybe if, if, if the city engineer or somebody go over and check, because we've been told this is a landscape business, and if there's 50 trucks they have there, between four and nine, they're all going to be parked there, and that's not going to be possible adequacy, it just just a concern I have. I don't know how it's done now, we don't have a showing of that yet, but just maybe that's another question we could have, but I don't have any problem with tabling it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion to table it?
Yes.
I'll move to table it.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Posed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you for the presentation, and I'm sure we'll be able to figure this out.
Yeah, apologize for the confusion, but we will, we'll be happy to provide the information as requested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business, none, liaison reports.
None, sir.
None, subcommittee reports. We will have a subcommittee meeting on next Wednesday. We're not sure whether it's going to be a public meeting or, or open to the public or not. We are going to review the responses for the P O C D.
Consultant.
Consultants, yeah. So we're getting direction from the city attorney on whether that's a public meeting or an executive session. Chair's report, I have none. Thank you, everyone. I do apologize if I offended anyone throughout my time here as chair, and leave it at that. Staff report?
None this evening.
Okay, thank you. Motion to, now we have approval of minutes?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, without objection, and a motion to adjourn without objection.
So moved.
We are adjourned.
Good night.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.